Good evening and welcome to the Southeast Delco School District Committee of the Whole for Thursday, August 17, 2003. At this time, we're going to begin our committee reports. First up, education.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're going to go over a couple of data points and give you guys a preliminary look at some of our assessment results that we got in from PSSA administration that occurred in the spring of the year. So, just a quick update in terms of where we are with some of our core instructional[81.18][81.21]initiatives. We have released to our principals and assistant principals our draft math frameworks for grades six, seven, eight, and high school Algebra I. So, those are in the hands right now of teachers and will be in the hands of teachers and are currently in the hands of the administration of our individual schools. We're going to, as I mentioned before, we're going to start with a trial implementation of this beginning August 23, going all the way through June of '24. What that means is that our teachers will be utilizing the draft frameworks throughout the year, and they will be participating in individual feedback sessions per grade. So, like, the sixth grade team will meet with our academic department as well as the CIU to provide feedback on the implementation. On top of that, we've also been receiving deliveries of our new core math materials for grades K to eight, Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry in our high schools. So, the majority of them have been shipped and are available in schools as of now, and we are waiting for a couple more deliveries to hit. But as of right now, the majority of our materials have arrived in our schools. Quick update on our science and social studies materials refresh. Elevated science materials are being delivered to school buildings, which includes significant amount of inquiry kits, the online access for our students and teachers, and the consumable materials for students that they can utilize the consumable books while the class sessions are in progress. We also have the modernized versions of MyWorld for all of our grades K to eight classes. One change with that is that we are now excited to have our year-long content in our middle grades, which now includes world geography, instead of splitting world history into two, or American history, I'm sorry, into two separate grade levels and grade years. So, we'll have world geography in sixth, world history in seventh, and American history now in eighth grade. I do have to say, I want to thank our principals, assistant principals who are in the room tonight, as well as our maintenance and our building staff who have been working tirelessly. There are a lot of materials coming into school buildings. There are pallets and pallets of fresh, new content that are coming in, and we have to, I really do want to appreciate and thank our principals and assistant principals and our building maintenance teams for making sure that those are getting out into classrooms. So, let's take a quick look at our year in review. We definitely had a K to eight writing focus this year. We focus on writing portfolios, consistent monitoring of progress when it comes to student writing. We, you've heard me say it over and over this year, our principals, assistant principals, and teachers have been absolutely focused on math instruction and math best practices. Instructional standard alignment has been a focus for all of our administrators. Small group instruction, SGI, has been a focus in all of our buildings, looking at our professional learning community schedules and how we're using that time to make sure that our teachers' valuable time is being used in the best way as possible and monitoring instruction in all classes. These are our instructional focus areas that we have been really focused on, and our principals and assistant principals have also been. So, what did we learn from our preliminary data? We have some positive news to share. We saw math increases in all of our locations last year, literacy growth in many grades in schools. We had a mixed bag of results for our science, and Dr. Winder spent a lot of time during our last session talking about increases with attendance and our overall suspension decreases in our one to eight buildings last year. So, our ongoing areas of focus as we begin to launch an exciting start to the school year, we're continuing that modernization of our literacy framework. We talked a lot about math. We're also doing that in-house work where our teachers are modernizing the literacy framework in grades K to eight. We talked about the need to move from a archaic system of report card reporting in first and second grade to moving that information to an A, B, C, D, F schedule into PowerSchool so that our report cards in grades one and two are now in line with our three through eighth grade students. Year two of our literacy and Saxon phonics in our early grades implementation that was successful last year, got a lot of positive feedback from our teachers. We're excited to continue that implementation this year. And, of course, our K to nine math emphasis. We have been talking about how math did not translate well during the pandemic, and we absolutely made sure that we made that a focal area and a focal point of growth as we move into the next parts of our year. So, let's take a look at our PSSA preliminary data from the August Pennsylvania Department of Education overview. So, this is not finalized until the Pennsylvania Department of Education posts this for public consumption on the future-ready website. This is our internal look at the raw data files and breaking it down and comparing it to last year. So, as a quick overview, you see some incredibly positive growth, especially from the Darby Township School and Harris School. Sharon Hill School has shown some growth, and we've also reflected upon some of the decreases that we see in the purple that came out of the Delcroft School this year and how we can look at that for next year and what kind of systems that we need to put in place to take a look at some of those decreases that we saw in ELA. Math, we were heavily focused on math, and again, there were some significant, significant areas of growth. Darby Township School, every grade level showed year-over-year growth in terms of mathematics, sometimes upwards of double-digit increases from our preliminary data. Delcroft School, the same thing. Harris School, down the board as well, in terms of growth, and Sharon Hill Schools showed some positive growth in terms of our math implementation. So, we were highly focused on math. We ensured that we were meeting with math. We brought the DCIU in to meet about math. We made investments in math, including calculators, including modern technology to support the development of math, and our teachers really have absolutely focused in, and I couldn't be more proud. We still have a long way to go, guys. You know, this is no cheer for celebration, but when you see across-the-board growth in a content area that did not translate well during the virtual instruction times, we are definitely on the right trajectory so that we can continue to make positive gains moving forward. PSSA science, we had four areas of increase and about four areas of either a slight decrease or a moderate decrease. The yellow shows where there's a statistically questionable growth or reduction in score. So, we see the 25.37 versus the 25. It shows that we may have dropped by less than one point, but we really want to see what happens when the actual data files are released from PDE. So, what are our next steps based upon what we have seen from this? We know certain things work. Our administrators and our teachers know that certain instructional programs and certain instructional paradigms work. Guided reading works. Small group instruction, ensuring that kids are taken away from an entire group of 28, and the teacher is focusing on more small groups of students so they can focus on their individual needs. Intentional instructional feedback from administrators during the walkthrough cycles to teachers to help support and grow instruction. We know that writing means something, and we know that our students have a huge ability to be able to articulate their thoughts with a pencil and paper. We know that it works when teachers support that, and there are certain environments where writing is an absolute strength in our district. We're going to continue building upon that. Part of the board agenda is that we are making a recommendation to pilot something called STAR assessments over at the Delcroft School. This will allow us to try it out for a year, replace some of our diagnostic interventions at the Delcroft School, and replace them with something that we're hoping would be able to provide us with a little bit more targeted information so that we can make intervention groups with more data, we can target instruction, and it will give our administrators and our teachers more data to be able to inform instruction. So, we'd like to try that for a year as a response to some of the scores that we saw from that individual building. Also, a recommendation that's on our agenda is for the continuation of Lexia, which is an intervention program that is used throughout our district. We're clearly going to continue with our math focus and, as Dr. Winder mentioned last week, ensuring that our schools and our principals and assistant principals are focused on not just suspending a student out, but finding the root cause of some behaviors and working with students and families to ensure that we have students and seats absolutely paid off, and we want to continue that focus. And that was our quick update. Any questions? So, each individual school district is given data files beginning in June, and it goes through August. So, there's an initial reporting based upon test booklets that are returned by a certain date. A second reporting category comes out when most of the books have been returned. A third window then opens up, and a separate data file comes out when the data has been cleaned up a little bit and attributions have taken place. So, we have seen three of these files, but it is not, I don't ever consider it official until it's for public view posted by the PDE. These are good faith estimates as to where we are. I appreciate that, and I think a lot of the stuff that, the support from the Board of School Directors for improvements in our technology, for example, that calculator purchase to ensure that we have modern technology, TI-84 plus CE's all the way down to sixth grade so students can become, they can, they can get used to them at a, at a younger age so that by the time they get to Academy Park High School, this isn't a new piece of technology. This is something they've been using for three years. Those kind of initiatives to improve technology, the SmartBoard integration package that we put out, the new, the revamped math series that we just are delivering to our schools currently with Envision, all those things by the board's, you know, approval and support is absolutely helping. The board's approval of the DCIU project to bring in DCIU to look at our math frameworks, engage, not dictate, but engage with us and our teachers to make a meaningful math framework that standards align is huge. So, just that consistent support from modernizing has been absolutely helpful, and I think the proof is in the pudding there. You did already. You did. So, that's a thank you. I will say that the, one of the biggest things that we've done as a school district is last year by putting smart panels in all of our K to eight classrooms has absolutely brought technology and instruction to life. For the first time in our district's history, every child in this school district in a K to eight classroom was able to visualize and see instruction in a completely different way, something that other school districts have taken, it's just been taken for granted for 20-plus years. Our kids got this for the first time in every single room last year, and it has made a huge, huge impact. And quality teaching. A SmartBoard can't teach kids. Great teachers do. And we have some great teachers and are doing great things now that they are starting to get the appropriate tools to be able to do what they're asking for. Well, the scores I just showed you, they are the PSSA scores that are available that were presented to school districts. I can't tell you when PDE officially posts where 22, 23. I would say it's typically October, November, in that timeframe. This is a very, and I want to disclaim that, like, each iteration of files that we've received, there has been some movement, a point or two, but nothing that it's been like, oh, my gosh, we're at 30% now, we're at 50% or 10%. There will be some fluctuation based upon attributions and worst student. And, you know, it's, it's a team effort, and we have, in this room, we have amazing principals, and they lead teams of amazing teachers, and tons of people coming together just for the benefit of, of our kids, and... Thank you. And, you know, again, we got a lot of work to do, but I'm proud to be able to stand with our principals and assistant principals, say that, you know, the tide is turning and there are positives that are coming out. We meet, we meet monthly. In September, it's usually the third, the third Tuesday of every month, we do instructional rounds in every... Typically. I can get you that schedule once it's completely finalized. All the principals, we go to a building, and we, it's a non-threatening kind of situation. We go into classrooms, we see trends, and we kind of analyze what we see and how we can, what, what we learned that we need to either celebrate or what things are that we can improve upon or grow. Yeah, absolutely. You got it. No problem. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Yes, can you put the mic down there so we can hear her?
It should go through the speakers. Just give me one second to see what's going on here.
Amy. Amy, can you hear me? Give us one second, Ms. Washington. Ms. Washington, can you send us a message? Dr. Winder and myself, we have a little technical difficulties right now. Can she hear me?
For the Title I services, Dr. Ryan reviewed that at our parent-student advisory in our two sessions yesterday, and it is posted online, but I did want to say, our Title I money was used for 12 interventionists and intervention materials, Study Island and other products, and for non-public services. Our Title II money was used for three classroom reduction teachers, one in K, one in second, and one in fourth. Our Title III funding was used for EL activities, and then our Title IV was used for Naviance, one behavior specialist, and a portion of a counselor's salary, as well as iPads for the libraries. This list can be found in our parent-student advisory link. Dr. Ryan did a PowerPoint with it, but we just wanted to read it out again at our committee of the whole for people that did not attend the parent-student advisory nor had the chance to go to the website. Any questions? We are going to move to parent-student advisory. You can do that.
So, parent-student advisory met on Thursday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, the 16th. We had two sessions at Darby Township, so we want to thank the principal at Darby Township for allowing us to use their library. It was a hybrid meeting. We met at 10:00 a.m., and then again, we met at 12:00 p.m. We talked about back-to-school dates for all the schools. We also spoke about the dress code for the district moving forward for this school year. We talked about Title I funding. We also had some great questions from parents about how they can be more involved in their child's educational process. We gave them the resources for clearances so that they can participate at each school. We have not set a date for the next parent-student advisory. Most likely, it would be around November, and we are looking for parents to also participate in the parent-student advisory committee, and we're also asking a, any board member if they would like to head that committee. Please let me know as soon as possible. Oh, one other thing. We, Dr. Winder spoke about her, see, I had to look at you, open door, which is monthly?
You see, the Wednesday before the board meetings.
So, the Wednesday before the board meeting. You can sign up for that on the website as well, it's on our school district's website. And, did I forget anything?
I just would like to say kudos to our kindergarten parents. We did have parents from a variety of grade levels, but they were on our highest attendance, and that is a great way to start off your child's education by participating in the parent advisory from the onset. And then we, Dr. Ryan and I, and Mr. Baxter, were able to stay on with them a little bit after the meetings to help them navigate and become familiar with different things in the district. So, we are grateful for them, starting off with a bang for the new school year. Thank you. Next, we have finance.
Good evening, everyone. I just have one agenda item. This is a lease agreement, a one-year lease agreement for 18 of our vehicles. The purpose for the one lease is that these vehicles are older, and it's more cost-effective just to lease them for one year instead of a three-year lease. And that's pretty much all they're eligible for, just a one-year lease. But they're still in great condition, and again, it's cost-effective just to go one more year with them. And that's it.
Any questions? Dr. Larry, are you doing HR?
So, this is a quick update. Mr. Baxter provided some of the figures and some of the current fill rates, so I'm not going to read them verbatim, but a lot of our conversions, our billing, and our principals and assistant principals and conjunction with the HR department have been working tirelessly to fill vacancies and work to ensure that we get as many qualified teachers in our school buildings as possible. So, I was at our school buildings, and our principals are taking four, five, six, seven interviews a day to do everything they can to make sure that we are competitive with our suburban counterparts around us, to make sure that we're getting as many teachers as we possibly can for the start of school. So, there are, you can see here on the list as to where we are after Mr. Baxter tabulated as of right now, and even into next week, our principals are working with HR to schedule more interviews and try to get as many teachers in our buildings as possible.
And for our public, right now, the K Center is 100% filled, Delcroft is 90% filled, Darby Township 94% filled, Harris 93% filled, Sharon Hill 90% filled, Knight Academy 91% filled, and Academy Park 93% filled. And Mr. Baxter and I was actually working together this afternoon, and so this 28 has actually turned to 24, so a couple of the schools' percentage has increased a little more. When we met in June, we set a goal for our district as well as our schools by August the 7th, which just passed, what percentage we needed to be filled, and we have been able to meet that as we continue to move forward. Any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. As far as keeping our teachers, have we ever strategized of how we can... Yes. Our teachers, to keep them, keep them in our district?
So, we... One of the things, if you remember, last year, we talked about that, and that was when we put in the attendance...
Yes.
A meeting, then we also put in two bonuses.
Right.
We also have tried to do some acknowledgements. As I announced in the last board meeting, we will be not, not just our teachers, because we have to remember all of our staff, because with the teachers, they need the support of the PCAs and the instructional aides. So, we are acknowledging some of them at our opening day ceremonies for things that they have done. We're working on the climate and trying to do those things. You all, the negotiation team, which I'm not a part of, I just get to hear, but I think you, Ms. Monroe Whitsett and Ms. Harris Johnson are part of that team, and you all just finished during the school year doing negotiations with them to start a new contract for this year. So, all of those discussions and open talks were a part of that.
Yeah, I mean, I do understand, but all the challenges that you came up with, did you come up with anything, like, anything new or another way to try to keep our students, the teachers in our district?
When you say new, outside of the things that we've already been put in place and done?
Yes. No?
No. The things we're at, we're so far, I think last year this time, we were in the 60s for... No. The things we're at, we're so far, I think last year this time, we were in the 60s for our fill rates. So I mean, we're progressing, and we're doing those things. And then, you know, you continue to add to it and meet and discuss as you go along.
Right. So as they exit out, I'm not sure what the word is, but as they exit out, don't they, or they get to the interview?
They have an exit interview, and Mr. Baxter, at least once a quarter, give you all the breakdown of those.
The reasons? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. So it's likely that all of these positions, teaching positions, won't be filled by the start of the school year. What is our substitute situation in the district?
So we have our supplemental teachers. We hired them. And we want to use them as much as possible for small group instruction. But when necessary, we do have them to cover. But we also contract with Kelly's, not Kelly's, STS. We just moved to STS. And that is our substitute company that we contract with and try to ensure that we have as many subs as possible. But the reason why we use some of our Esters money to put three to four supplementals in each building is to help with that, help with the coverages.
And certainly, I'm sure you all are doing everything you need to, to make sure, even if there's a shortage of substitutes, that somehow there's an arrangement that kids are given what they need.
Yeah, we have, you know, the coverages. And then we give out a list at the beginning of every year, we started that two years ago, of the expected protocol for coverages. Because as we know, the state does not allow special education teachers to cover unless they're covering the class that is a dual-inclusion class, and the one teacher's out there giving the services. So we had to look and categorize the protocol of who would cover if we are short and there's just no one else to do it. And sometimes that means administrators, including ESC, have gone to places like the high school to cover or to make sure that there was a daughter in the room. Okay, next, we have... Yes?
So Ms. Perry asks, has the HR, when has he finished the report? The report you're speaking of is the exit interview report, or? Ms. Perry?
I was, I typed that while he was still giving the report, just saying I had a question for what you were talking about.
Okay, he's done the report, so what was the question? Okay, one second. Dr. Larry's coming back to the mic. Thank you, Dr. Larry.
So we have a preliminary professional development plan for the school year. Keeping in mind, we have a professional development date in, basically, in February. And there's one other additional in-person professional development date. And the remaining dates are virtual days. We do have a preliminary calendar of events and how we see the year and how that will progress out. That was shared out with our union partners, but I can absolutely send it to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Larry. One second. This is for HR. No, this question's for HR. Ms. Washington said, she has a HR question as well. It has about fall sports supplemental contracts. She would like to have a copy of the supplemental contracts. And also, does this include the new hires or potential hires? Ms. Washington? Ms. Washington, we can't hear you. Okay, I can hear you now. Yes. Yes, we can hear you. So you're asked for this sports supplemental contracts? And you also asked a question concerning the new hires and potential hires?
Yes.
Can you elaborate on that one? The supplemental contracts, they will be, they should be on the board box as an attachment already? But the new hire and potential hires, that's the question I asked you to elaborate on, please. So we're having technical difficulty. We'll just go to property right now until we can get Ms. Washington back on audible. So the last one is property. Dr. Winder?
And... Mr. Curry.
Mr. Curry. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to give an update. We had a lighting issue after our storms last week. Took several days for Pico to kind of straighten out the issues, and power outages, obviously, in the area. And when Pico restored power to Academy Park on late Thursday afternoon, we noticed that there were some control issues with the lighting system. So we weren't sure what the problem was. So we actually scheduled our lighting rep to come out and troubleshoot more in the computer system for, you know, all the lights at Academy Park. They came out this Wednesday, and they noticed that there was, I don't know, close to 200 lights out throughout the building. And we thought the building may have gotten a direct strike or a power surge that came through the building and took out some of the lighting controls and bales, things like that. So I made some calls to get some additional equipment if needed. Another rep came out today from the same company. And as we were doing troubleshooting and stuff, we found out that, we found some breakers in the building that were just tripped out. It wasn't maybe the lights. So we were able to restore a lot more areas of the building. This is stuff that I've been communicating with the building administration and the admin team here as well. So we made progress today, for sure. But there's areas of maybe the lunchroom that have a section of lights out at the moment, and some other areas. But we made big-time progress. We're going to continue to troubleshoot and come up with another plan to light some of these areas temporarily. Like I said, the system was put in, I think, in 2011. So it's getting some age to it where it needs some upgrades. The building would be a great candidate in the near future for some LED upgrades with these, getting rid of these lights and bales. It'd be very energy-saving. But I just want to give you an update that we are making progress on the lighting issues. I have more of an updated survey tomorrow of what areas are affected. And we'll start to concentrate on those areas and get any other vendors in to assist us prior to school opening. But just wanted to give an update that we're making progress over there. Something that came up, like I said, this area is affected tremendously. And Pico took a little longer than expected to get us up and running so we could find these problems. But we're working on it, and we should be in good shape by the start of school. But just wanted to give an update.
Thank you so much, Dr. Larry.
Mr. Curry.
Mr. Curry, I'm sorry. I apologize. Ms. Washington, so you're asking about the supplemental contracts. She would like to know, are they new hires? And if they are, do we vote on them separately or just as a basic contract?
So the supplemental contracts are yearly contracts, because we are using Esters funding for that. And we vote on them the same. They're still acknowledged as a teaching position or professional position. But at the end of each year, it has to be determined if they are coming back. But this also keeps us that as the Esters monies run out, we are not having to furlough or riff our current teachers. So this is a way to get as many bodies in the building through a contracted position.
And also the fall sports.
And then for the fall sports, they come back yearly? Yeah.
Ms. Washington, did that answer your questions? Okay, thank you for that. Okay. Dr. Winder, do you have anything else for this meeting?
That is all for our Committee of the Whole.
At this time, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. So I know we made an announcement for a special meeting. Unfortunately, we had to cancel it because of the outage in the building. It was to address the daycare issue that some parents were having. Currently, we have two buildings that will be, the agency that will be providing the before and after care will be the YMCA. So any parent who was, had any questions or any concerns, currently, the YMCA will be in our buildings, Harris... Harris and Delcroft. So there will be before and after care for the start of the school year.
And we are putting into place, as the other three schools are getting set up, this is nothing that the contractor did. Actually, I've talked to the Office of Civil Rights three times, Representative DeLoso four times, and someone at the Office of Early Learning. They've had some staffing changes, and they, three of the schools, they changed their supervisor. And so as those supervisors got other loads, they did not get it done. But we are working with the YMCA to either provide staffing coverage at those other three schools, where we are just paying someone for the two- or three-week transition, or bus transportation, one way or the other, to ensure that the students at the other schools are not in a situation where they don't have care. Heard back from Mr. Rank today, who is over the YMCA. And at this time, they've had 30 people in contact with them. And some have registered, and some have just showed interest in the five schools.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Winder.
Wait a minute, I do have a question.
Yes, Ms. Whitfield, can you turn your mic on, please? Thank you.
I'm confused. So you're saying that Harris and Delcroft schools, where the YMCA are, will be present at the schools? Okay, for our children. But the three other schools we're working on, I mean, I'm trying to figure out. So even if we are not prepared for the other three schools, are we taking our children out of the school into the YMCA? Okay, well, please clarify.
So in effort to not have the children do all that transition of going to Ridley?
Right.
As a school, we can offer early morning programs, right? For a couple of weeks until the Y has their paperwork. Because the Civil Rights, they make their, they complete their process based on a ZIP code. So for example, Darby Township and Kindergarten Center aren't done. I spoke to the woman who has that ZIP code, I won't give her name, but she said she never got the packets from her own inner body until August 1st. There's nothing we can do about that. All five packets were handed in together. So two have been approved because they have one supervisor. The other woman, she was still on vacation, so we haven't been able to talk to her yet. So in order to supplement that, where the parents in the neighborhood doesn't suffer, we can have our staff there. Or if we can't find a staff member who willing to do extra time, we can provide transportation. And we've already talked to Mr. Kraus, where all the kids could be at Delcroft and Harris, and we would bus them to their other school. So one way or another, and we've set up two plans, a Plan A, which would be to keep them at their own school. But we can't make somebody want to take that position if it's needed. Or provide the transportation. But one way or another, our community will not suffer, neither will the YMCA, who this whole situation is out of their control.
So, okay, so just for me to get clarity, the other schools, if we don't have all of our paperwork done, we could transfer...
It's not our paperwork.
Their paperwork, I'm sorry. We could transfer our kids from, like, Delcroft, I mean, I'm sorry, Sharon Hill and Darby Township to Delcroft and Harris. So when it's time to, for the parents to pick them up, we go transfer them back to Sharon Hill and Darby Township? I mean, I don't understand what you...
So would we, would ask the school, because the parent's problem, the parent's problem is they're still at work and the school has gotten out. So we will transport them to Harris and Delcroft. And instead of the parent coming to Sharon Hill, they would go to Delcroft or Harris to get them. But the other thing would be, they need to be to school at 3:35, or they need to go to Ridley. So we're trying to make the best of the situation that we can.
Right, but suppose you have somebody at Darby Township that's taking transportation, and they would have to take transportation to either go to Harris or Delcroft, that's still a inconvenience for the parents?
Well, we'll have to do individual with that. That might occur. And we have to work with that one situation if that does occur. But what we're not saying to our parents is, we're sorry, we don't have anything for you until the Y hears from the state. That's what we're not doing. So we got a Plan A and B. We need to get a Plan C, because we'll talk to somebody individually. I've already talked to a couple of parents. Dr. Ryan's already talked to a couple of parents. And we were able to help them with their situation. So that's what we'll continue to do, is think outside the box.
Okay, but my concern, as long as the parents that may have to travel from Darby Township, for example, to Harris or Delcroft to pick up their child, everybody don't have transportation. So as long as these parents have that understanding, and they can get to their child, okay, everything, you know, would everything be okay in that situation? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. So what I'm really saying is, we asked in November for us to handle this.
Right.
Because we did not want to be here.
Right.
But it did not occur. So now we're making the best that we can of the situation, because that part was out of our control, right? So what we're... So what we're doing, we're doing what is in our control. And if a parent is in a situation, we will have to do what we can to help them out. But right now, which many of them have been happy to hear, they're not having to go to Ridley. They're being able to stay within the community.
Long as the parents are, okay.
That does not mean that we're not going to get one that has a concern. Then we will meet with them and do what we can to help them with their concern.
Okay.
Okay?
I have several questions.
Yes, ma'am.
And all of them, if you don't have the answer for all of them right now, that is fine. But I think that as you deal with more parents, some of these things may come up. So like first, money-wise for the district, like, do we even estimate of how much it's going to cost the district to either staff before and after care and/or provide transportation when we already have shortages of employees? And then, will the YMCA be reimbursing us for any costs? If our staff provides care, instead of transporting them, if we provide care in the school, are we charging those families? Because then, there's some situations that could come up. So say if a family has ELRC subsidies, which used to be called CCIS.
Yes.
If your child does not attend and that payout's not going somewhere, that parent will lose the CCIS subsidy. So if we're taking the kid into care, instead of the Y, we can't accept the CCIS subsidy? So I, I have that concern. And like I'm saying, you don't have to answer all of that. And then also, another thing, if we take the children into our care, so say if at Sharon Hill, we enroll 15 kids for before care, we have our teachers with them. Can we guarantee that as soon as the Y takes over and has their license, that they will have the staff to take those children right away? And what if it's a bigger number of kids? You know, there's going to be so many working parts to this that I think a school district may not be prepared for because you don't normally work with the Office of Child Development and Early Learning. It's not what we, it's not what a school district does. And then YMCA isn't really a childcare. It's, it's run a little differently, so they're not super familiar. So how are we going to handle all of these challenges? And is the YMCA prepared?
So in talking to the early, Office of Early Learning, no matter who the board would have selected outside of knowledge point who was already in, we would be at this same point because everyone had to apply for the same thing the YMCA did as a new provider besides knowledge points. So when the board, which each of you have your individual votes, decided who they wanted, this was the process that was going to happen. The only thing that would have helped this be smoother is if we would have taken care of this in November or December. And we didn't. And there's no need of us continually going around and around about that because it's not going to solve it. Now, when you talk about the subsidy, if that is a real issue, then those students should go to Delcroft or Harris where they're being serviced by the Y and their subsidies being taken. You know, we have a situation and we need to do what we can to work through it because time is not on our side. So as far as cost, are we asking the YMCA to reimburse us? No, we are not. We are going to try to use our extra time, some of our Title I funds, to work together to get this done. We're not expecting this to be forever. I will continue to contact civil rights as well as Representative DeLoso is partnering with us to make this happen. You know, we'll stay on it. I mean, it's out of our control, but they're just like the rest of us. They're having a hard time finding people who want to work. And so they had to make some shifts, and now we have to deal with those shifts. But it's a learning lesson for us as well as when these contracts come up, that we try to work efficiently to go ahead and make a decision so that the organization has a lengthier lead time. Because that was the problem. They did not have a lot of lead time. And that wasn't their fault. And so I think it's our due diligence. I wholeheartedly believe it's our due diligence to work with them and do whatever's in our power to make it happen and not be a stickler at this point. Because even if you choose to go with someone else and it's not knowledge points, you got this problem starting all over again with Part A.
Yeah, I mean, I understand. I understand what you're saying. And I'm willing to work with the YMCA, but I'm concerned with the parents. Because if a parent is, live, I want to use Darby Township area, and they are transporting, they are using transportation to get to work and come home from work, and they could live around the corner from Darby Township. So how are they going to be able to pick up their child if they have to pick up their child from Delcroft or a Harris school? That's not fair on the parents.
And that's when we say, if we have to provide transportation through Dennis...
So that's why I was asking you.
And we said that was Plan B. We told you we have a Plan A.
Okay, that's my fault.
And a Plan B.
Okay.
So I don't know what else to tell you.
Okay. All right, well, that's good. All right.
Madam Chairman, I have a question also. I reviewed a contract that was sent to me by Dr. Ryan for YMCA. And I made some recommended revisions to that contract that I believe is going to come before the board next week. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the revisions that I made essentially were that the contract should not become effective until the YMCA received what I thought was called a certificate of compliance, aka a license from the state. And they would, they would not, the contract would not be effective until that occurred. And if that did not occur, the contract would be null and void. That was essentially my recommendation. So in listening to this, and I apologize because I haven't been involved in the nuts and bolts, are we saying that as we speak, we know that in two schools, they're licensed to provide services, but in the other schools, they're not?
So at this point, the, the site visit is Monday. And they're supposed to have their license after that because they're using the same spot that has already been approved by the previous person that was doing the before and after care. The other ones, the other three, the problem is, it hasn't made it out of the Civil Rights Office. So we're using the same spots that have already been approved before. So it's just getting the paperwork piece through. So the contracts will be based per school as they are approved.
Okay, so, again, to reiterate, Dr., we're saying that if they're approved next week, they'd be approved for two sites? And then at some time in the future, hopefully, they'd be approved for the other three sites?
Correct.
Well, I think the contract should indicate that the contract only, the contract should be segmented, I believe, per site. Because right now, it's, it's, it's a all-inclusive contract without specifying where the locations are going to be. Now that I understand that there may be approval for two sites but not the other three, we should approve the contract just for those two sites. And then, well, I mean, we should approve a contract that says the contract will be approved per site because, I mean, there's no guarantee that they'll be approved for any sites. Hopefully, they will be. And there's no guarantee they'll be approved for all of the sites at some point in time. So I guess what I'm saying is, I'm going to have to work with Dr. Ryan to rework that contract to be able to accommodate what I believe now is, through nobody's fault, the reality of the circumstances.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, that we need to amend the contract?
Well, we don't have a contract yet. We didn't, we didn't approve the contract.
Right, but I'm saying that the contract that, is there a contract that is prepared for the YMCA? To have all five sites?
Yeah, well, Dr. Ryan sent me a contract that I revised. But the contract that I saw does not specify sites. It looks as if it's a contract for the entire district.
Right.
It doesn't say site by site. So now that we understand that some sites are going to be approved, but some sites are not, I believe the wording of the contract should accommodate that.
Right. So are we, are you saying that we need to amend that contract to specify that our children is only going to be at two sites, with, is Delcroft and Harris?
Well, I think the contract should indicate that the, that the approval, that the contracts, that the contract will be valid per site. Not, not, in other words, as each site is approved, that, the contract will be, will be validated but just for that particular site. And then when all five sites are approved, hopefully, the entire contract will be valid for all the sites. Whereas right now, I mean, for example, let's say that you, let's say that you want a contract for plumbing services in the district, an outside contractor for plumbing services. We don't say, generally speaking, you're going to perform plumbing services just for Harris but not for Delcroft and not for the high school. We say you're going to provide plumbing services for the entire district.
Right.
Now that I know that this is going to be school by school, we just have to make sure the contract accommodates that particular reality, is what I'm saying.
Right, but I'm asking you that in the contract, if, if we are approving two sites, once they are approved for the third, the three other sites that's not approved, then we have to amend that contract again?
No, no, I'm going to try to draft it in such a way...
Or you have to add the other site?
I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to try to draft it in such a way that as the, as the, again, I'll have to look at the contract again. But in my mind right now, listening to this, it seems to me the best way to do it so that we don't have to do continual amendments and bring them in front of the board...
It's too much work.
Is to say that as each site becomes licensed, the contract becomes valid to that site. So you won't have to, you won't have to revise the contract at all.
Okay.
I, I think Dr. Ryan and I can work it out.
Okay, so, I don't know whether if, to say this or not because suppose we don't cross that bridge and it could be more problems?
Well, contractually, it should not be an issue because we're only, the contract's only going to say that you only get paid for what you do at a particular site.
Okay.
And if you're not going to be at a particular site, then you're not going to get paid. The contract's not valid for that site. The contract will become effective site per site as opposed to the contract as a whole, is what I have in my mind's eye right now.
Okay.
Okay?
So are you going to review that contract again?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Can we have a copy of it before?
I'm sure, Dr. Ryan, once we get the final version, we'll distribute it. I, I did give him, and he did, we do, we did, we do have a revised version per my revision. So until I came to this meeting tonight, I thought we had a contract that was going to be sent to the board, but now I have to revise it again.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it, yeah, because I like to review that contract myself. Thank you.
So something Mr. DiOrio just said. He said they will not get paid, they get paid by the families. They pay us for renting space. So then that brings the question, are we still getting those monthly rent payments or not until the license starts? Because not only now are we talking about the district spending money, we're also talking about the district losing those rent payments.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I misstated that. You're, you're absolutely correct. They're, they're paying us for the use of our buildings, yes.
Ms. Washington asks, is the contract for the YMCA still being worked on? Yes, it is, Mr. DiOrio. Oh, okay. So Mr. DiOrio just spoke about that, Ms. Washington, thank you. Dr. Jack, did you have a question? You're fine.
The YMCA will pay us for what they use. Period.
That is part of my revisions, is that it would be pro rata. They would pay us for what they're using at that particular point in time. So that, that part of the contract won't change. That's already in there.
Right. But I'm just requesting that the board get a copy of the contract like a couple of days before we vote on it? Because I definitely want to see and review that contract.
I'll make sure that the board sees it.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Are there any more questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none. Our next meeting. School Board Business is Thursday, August 24th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. Committee of the Whole, Thursday, September 21st, 2023, 6:00 p.m. School Board Business Meeting, Thursday, September 28th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. Can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
No chance.
Second.
Oh, no, but I got to, got to close this out.
Thank you for attending the Committee of the Whole. We do have an executive session, so if you would expedite...
Have a great, please be safe going home. Hopefully, the Eagles are winning. I'm going to get my...